I have to admit, I once pulled into the Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year Parking Place by Mistake and Mary Williams pulled in after me and said, "Move that car out of my spot." So that is your spot.
And then for you also, it was a hundred dollar gift certificate? And this token of appreciation?
Thank you very much. Just, I'm grateful and appreciative about this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your extra work.
And if we could have Linda Renee come forward, please?
And this is the 2010 Classified Employee of the Year winner. And Linda Renee actually was nominated by IVC, Irvine Valley College, and she was chosen by the state. And only six people were chosen by the state to receive the sixth Classified Employee of the Year statewide every year. And Linda was one of them. Whereas Linda Renee, a senior administrative assistant at Irvine Valley College and a district employee for 20 years, assisted in the creation and implementation of an online orientation program and was instrumental in the development of an online student advisement program, allowing students to fulfill their matriculation online. And whereas Linda Renee was recently recognized by the Board of Governors, the State Chancellor's Office, and the Foundation for California Community Colleges as a model employee in one of the six 2010 Classified Employee of the Year winners. Therefore, be it resolved at the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District to hereby commend Linda Renee for her 20 years of outstanding service and well-deserved recognition as a classified employee who demonstrates the highest level of commitment to professionalism and the mission of the Californi Community Colleges. And Grace, can you please read the roll?
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams. Student trustee Shay.
Linda, would you like to say a few words?
You bet. Okay, I'd like to say thank you to the South Orange County Community College District, Board of Trustees, for recognizing the contributions that I've made with this resolution. I'd also like you to know that every day I'm excited to come to work. I have the pleasure of working with great colleagues, fabulous students, and just an amazing community, as well as a wonderful work environment. And it's my privilege to work here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. We appreciate that. Now we have one more. And Board President Wagner and Deputy Chancellor Portner are already there. And Gary Portner, I've kind of got mixed feelings about reading this because we don't want to see you go. But anyway, whereas Gary Portner has served with distinction and commitment as Deputy Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District since 1999 and has overseen the growth of the district's total budget from approximately a hundred million to over four hundred million, and that's balanced as of today, retirement of bond debt, retired all our bond debt, and is one of the first districts in the state to do so, and to do so by fully funding our retirement liability. One of the first districts in the state to fully fund our retirement liability. Whereas Gary Portner provided leadership to all district business operations, including fiscal services, payroll, accounting, purchasing, and facilities planning, and the complicated negotiations to develop the Advanced Technology Education Park. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend Gary Portner for his well-deserved retirement and express their appreciation for his leadership and dedication to the students of Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology Education Park. And Grace, can you please read the roll?
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchaker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams. Student trustee Shay.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the Board for the resolution. I appreciate it very much. I also want to thank the Board for the privilege of having worked here for 11 years. It's been the most rewarding time of my career with the most challenges. I appreciate you allowing me to be here. I also want to thank all my colleagues that are part of the district community who welcomed me wholeheartedly and have worked with me throughout the years with a spirit of cooperation. So thanks to everybody. I really am sorry to leave.
We'll miss you.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna let him ride in the captain's chair tonight. All right, we are at public comments, and I have no requests to speak. Can that possibly be true? Madam Secretary? I have no requests to speak, is that correct? All right. Then at this point, we will move to reports and start with trustee Jay.
Yes, there's just one thing I'd like to mention. I listen to all these wonderful things that people are getting resolutions for here. But I think one thing that we overlook a little bit is almost every month, we receive several grants. It's rare that a month goes by that we don't get a grant. Now, for instance, this month, both the grants this month happened to be at Saddleback College, but they'd be just as likely to come from Irvine Valley or even from within the district. The Saddleback College Grant Acceptance Industry-Driven Regional Collaboration Health Information Technology Program. That's a real mouthful. But there's a grant here that is for 378,000. And I know that so frequently, the people who write these grants have put in a huge amount of time and effort to do so. Let me, I used to do some grant writing, and believe me, the most discouraging thing about grant writing is when you put months or weeks at least into a grant and then you don't get it. That's much worse, of course, than actually getting it. But that happens too, and happens frequently to grant writers. There's another grant here for enrollment, growth, and retention, Saddleback College again, for 169,000. These two grants total almost $550,000, and that's just one month. So I'd like to thank all of the people who so frequently spend huge amounts of time writing grants and successfully. Thank you.
Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. I have a couple of comments to make, but I've got to comment on something that Vice Chancellor Vermucci, is this coming through? The microphone's working tonight? Okay. That the MySite and SmartSchedule about the number of hits per month online. In the past month, MySite, 1,509,000, and the SmartSchedule, 1,233,000 in the past month. That's just phenomenal, and that's a reflection of our district's investment in technology. So I think we can all be very proud of that. It's been a busy month, as all of you know. But I would like to first of all congratulate trustee Don Wagner on winning the Republican primary nomination for the Assembly in the 70th District. And I would like to thank trustee Lang for his spirited campaign for Orange County Treasurer-Tax Collector. And I really like to see our Board members involved in the community and occasionally looking at a higher office. So congratulations to both of you. And it's my pleasure, I'm just very humbled, and I'm thankful to the people of Orange County for re-electing me to another term as the Orange County Public Administrator. And I see a number of people around this room, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their support, the endorsements, the kind words, and putting up signs and those kinds of things. Thank you all very much, and especially the people of South Orange County Community College District.
Mr. Milchaker.
First, I'd like to congratulate trustee Williams, who was re-elected to be Public Administrator, Public Guardian recently, and trustee Don Wagner, who was elected as the Republican candidate for the 70th Assembly District. And congratulate trustee Lang for a great campaign for treasurer. And congratulate trustee Fuentes for winning Republican Central Committee. And I think just about everyone on the Board was running for something else except me, and I congratulate them for doing that. That's what elected officials do, is run for office, just like administrators move around in administration. So that's really typical. So I also feel really good about honoring our classified employees and feel really good about the comments they make about how loving to work here. We really have wonderful employees at our district, and it really makes me feel good to be able to read the resolutions honoring some of our best classified employees. And today, we're hiring many new faculty members. And I read the information about the faculty members, and they look wonderful. So we're looking forward to having a really excellent future. The future of our district is based upon our faculty members, who are really, really, really long-term investments for our district, the biggest investment we make, and I think we made some good investments on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Patberg.
Thank you. I want to just say, I don't know if this mic is working, is it working? I want to just say that I was able to attend the City of Mission Viejo's recognition of the Saddleback College Veterans Memorial, dedication of the Veterans Memorial. The City of Mission Viejo was the first city to make a donation to the building of this memorial. And that started a snowball effect. So we really, and of course, that's our home city for Saddleback. So that was a very impressive event, and we got lots of resolutions that were taken by Todd Burnett, and hopefully he'll bring those to share with you sometime. And of course, I do want to congratulate those who were elected, including our president. It's with great sadness that our president also lost his 20-year-old son. And I'll be asking that we adjourn the meeting in the honor of his 20-year-old son tonight.
Thank you, trustee Patberg. First of all, congratulations trustee Williams on your election. And I also, before I forget, want to thank, personally thank Deputy Chancellor Portner for his service to the district, and we are going to miss you. And it has been, just been a wonderful, wonderful run, and we very much appreciate it. I also do want to take just a second to thank my colleagues and many people in this room and in the South Orange County District community and in the wider community who were so supportive of me and my family over the course of the last month. We are sincerely grateful, sincerely in your debt. Your kindness was noticed, was recognized, was very much appreciated. So thank you to all of you. Trustee Fuentes.
You done. Congratulations to trustee Williams on his reelection. Congratulations to you, Don, on your nomination by the Republican voters of the 70th District. My condolences on the passing of your son. And Gary, we're going to miss you. You have earned our trust and our confidence. All best wishes. Bon voyage.
Trustee Lang. This is going to sound a little bit repetitive, but I'll also congratulate my colleagues who enjoyed the success in the primaries, and condolences to Don on your son. I also just want to say, it's with great sadness that, you know, I sit here for Deputy Chancellor's retirement. He has been a rock, financial rock in this case, for our district. It's certainly, speaking as one trustee, has given me tremendous confidence knowing that he's been in that position. And I just appreciate all the service that you've provided our district. So thank you.
Student trustee Shay.
I wanted to say that, I wanted to say that I was able to attend the Relay for Life event at Irvine Valley College. And it was a very fun event, and it was very touching. And we all got to acknowledge the loved ones that survived cancer, as well as the ones that passed away. And I just want to say that we raised a lot of money for, you know, raising money for cancer. And I also wanted to say congratulations to everybody. And I'm sad to see Gary go, and I wish I could have gotten to know you more. But I hope you enjoy your retirement.
A quick word to the gentleman in the control room. We're having trouble hearing, although the microphones are on, so you may want to raise the levels a little bit, please. All right. Deputy Chancellor Portner tells me he will say the chancellor's report to what he does best, which is number crunch and budget. So we'll get to the chancellor's report in a little bit. And let me ask, at this point, are there any board requests for reports? I am unaware of any. All right, very good. Then we will move on. At this point, just a heads up, I am going to advance two items because we have some folks here to discuss them. Item 6.2, which are the Saddleback and Irvine Valley College Student Government Budget Proposals. And we will take those next. And then we've got a report at item 7.1 on the chancellor recruitment process. We will take that next, and then we'll come back to the consent calendar. So without further ado, and if the students are ready, let me turn it over to, who wants first crack at this? All right, well, I see Ms. Chuman on her way to the mic. Do you want to do it first, or? All right, let's go. Saddleback first.
I'm pleased to introduce Melissa Fenercy, Saddleback College's 2010-11 ASG President. And you all know Delaney Taylor, our 2009-2010 ASG President. Both Melissa and Delaney worked with the ASG Budget Committee during the spring semester to formulate the budget that they will now present to you.
Good evening, Honorable Trustees and Chancellor Mather. My name is Melissa Fenercy, and I'm the Saddleback ASG 2010-2011 President.
And I'm Delaney Taylor, the ASG 2009-2010 President. Before we begin, we would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you this evening. We would also like to extend our deepest gratitude to everyone who's helped us make our way through this process. Thank you Chancellor Mather, President Burnett, Carol Hilton, Beth Mueller, Geraldine Cuman, Thank you Chancellor Mather, President Burnett, Carol Hilton, Beth Mueller, Geraldine Cuman, Jane Rose Krantz, the Saddleback College faculty, and the staff and students at ASIVC, as we work so closely together to create these presentations, and of course, you, our Board of Trustees.
We will now begin the presentation of our budget for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. The process that the Budget Committee used this year changed slightly in comparison to years prior. For the first time, we asked that the college division representatives bank and allocate money to each of the programs that had historically been allocated funds by ASG during their spring or summer allocation process. This gave ASG Budget Committee insights to which events were more important to each division and its students, and guided the students' student grant process. Along with the division rankings, the Budget Committee took into account the number of students to benefit, the educational impact, and the enhancement of student life.
Before you, you'll see our statement of financial position, the formatting of which was outlined by the district to correlate closely with what you see from the district and colleges. Estimated beginning balance, please note that this budget is tentative, and our beginning fund balance of a hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars is an estimated number. This includes a, this includes what you would think of as a rollover of forty thousand dollars, and our emergency reserves of a hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Minimum guaranteed revenue includes the minimum commissions as per con- as per the contracts that ASG receives funding from. ASG is trying to renegotiate the contract with Fallat Higher Education Group to add a book rental program to our campus. The new program will provide hundreds of book titles to students at fifty percent of the original price. As of the docket deadline, we were looking to decrease the commission by thirty-two thousand dollars in order to start up the program. This would be the money, this would be money that would stay in the pockets of Saddleback College students. However, we were advised recently that Fallat will not be reducing our commission for the duration of the, of the year to test the program at Saddleback College. The hope is that the students will take advantage of the greatly reduced titles and the bookstore will not lose money. Minimum guaranteed revenue, six thousand thirty, six hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. ASB activity sales, eighty-five thousand dollars. Total sources of funds, eight hundred and sixty-one, one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Uses of funds, the division grant allocation you see before you are split into several aggregate categories, categories which will be presented in the beginning of the next slide. You will also find attached to the presentation a copy of the allocation by aggregate document as well as the, uh, allocation by division document.
This is the first of our aggregate category slides. These are the programs that aid in recruitment and ensure retention and persistence of all students. Campus life includes programs like the instrumental music events such as Feast of Lights, inter-club council operations, which supports all campus clubs, the Alumni Association Homecoming, and the college's art gallery.
Programs that enhance student learning, augmenting the academic experience, and helping students achieve academic and career goals. Co-curricular programs include speech and forensics team, California Nursing Students Association, the fashion show, the geography conference, the Scholar Athlete Award, and of course, the Chemistry Speaker Series.
Student support are the programs that are supported by ASG funding and that have far-reaching effects on all Saddleback students, validates their success, and provides opportunities to prepare them for their majors. Support includes Veterans Awareness Day, the EOPS Winner Workshop commencement, and the scholarship ceremony.
The ASG Operations represents the operating budget that allows ASG to be as self-supporting as possible. Included in the category are the following: three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for supplies, duplication, and other such essential office, office support; six thousand, eight hundred and twelve for leadership development and recognition; three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five for rev- rev- revenue generating items such as the movie and theme park tickets we sell; seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty for student development office assistants, several pro- project specialists, and the student health physicians to support the program.
The next slide breaks down contingency allocation for anticipated mid-year requests and scholarships. Each minimum contribution to these categories is derived as the stated percentage of the total projected revenue, as mandated by the ASG bylaws. This total projection of revenue is seven hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, and includes all minimum guarantees, revenue, plus the ASB stamp projection of revenue, and the beginning balance from the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten fiscal year. And that's going to conclude our presentation for you today, are there any questions?
Questions from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you both very much, appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
All right, and IVC is up next.
Good evening, uh, board and honored guests, I'd like to introduce our presenters tonight. Uh, we have with us our president, he's our new, uh, president for next year, that's Patrick McDonnell. He's an AOJ student and eventually wants to become a police officer, which I know kind of relates to some of our board members up here. Uh, he'll assist if needed, but right now, we'll, uh, move forward with our Treasurer and our Vice President, Elijah Lee. Uh, he's our new Vice President for two thousand ten and eleven, and, uh, to give you a little background about Elijah, he's, uh, hoping to transfer to Caltech. His goal is for engineering, and he's also quite a mathematic genius, I think. He, uh, loves working in our Learning Center, teaching math, that's one of the biggest kicks he gets out of, uh, being such a great mathematician, so. Uh, in the past years, he's represented California in a, a national competition. They take ten students from every state, and they have a national competition, and Elijah from high school has been involved in this three times, and means there was about five thousand people competing, and in that breakdown, he's about thirteenth, so, that's pretty awesome. Uh, next, I have with me George Talavera, he's, uh, a member of our Forensics Team, he's also, uh, received a State Medalist in Debate Award. Uh, he has, transfer plans are, he hopes, he's researching what schools have great debate programs. Uh, he has, uh, uh, his heart set on continuing that in his, in his future, so. I'll turn it over to Elijah and George, and they'll present the budget.
Thank you. So, good afternoon, uh, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank, uh, the board members and the Board of Trustees for this opportunity to present the budget, and first and foremost, we're going to start by, um, going over our process. Now, um, on the first page, the process, the process that we actually take is a little bit different, but we first and foremost take requests from the college community, and, uh, this is dictated through our constitution, and then a committee is formed, and we review, um, all of our requests based upon the criteria and the benefits for the students. Then awards are made depending on, um, our actual income, and each category is voted upon. Finally, we motion, um, and under a vote, to make adjustments for some of the programs if the final budget changes in any way, shape, or form. So, this next page, page number two, is, uh, our total sources of income, and it's divided into a couple of categories, and, uh, at the very top, we have, um, the beginning fund balance, and what the beginning fund balance is, is, uh, what we have left over from our previous budget, so it's all the line-by-line, um, accounts, and so this number is twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. And, um, this money is available for a one-time mid-year request that we save, um, so, it's not allocated in the budget. So then, um, next, we have our minimum guaranteed revenue, which is divided into two categories. First and foremost, it's, um, the money we get from the bookstore, and this is, uh, guaranteed three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, meaning that, uh, we get this specifically from textbooks, logo items, uh, supplies, and anything else that's sold within the bookstore. Now, secondly, we have the cafeteria category, and, uh, we're guaranteed twenty-five thousand dollars from them, and we get this, uh, money from the food, the catering, uh, coffee cart, and any, um, uh, from the snack food vending machine. Now, the next category, and the reason it's red and a negative number, is because it's our last college assessment, meaning that this is a fund, uh, this is something that we have to pay every year, and it's divided into two specific categories, our utilities and for, uh, the cost for office assistant. Now, for utilities, we pay fifteen thousand dollars a year, and for the office assistant, we pay seventy thousand dollars a year, and this includes both the salary and the benefits. So that's the reason the number is in red and is, uh, negative. Also, um, at the end, all, everything calculated and said and done comes out to a minimum guaranteed revenue of two thousand, uh, two thousand ninety-five, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, excuse me. Okay, so, um, going down on the line, we have our ASIVC sticker sales, and we, um, estimate this to be at around forty-five thousand dollars, and, um, finally, under miscellaneous, um, the reason we have this category is because anything, any money that comes in that is over the guaranteed minimum revenue, goes into this specific category, so, meaning that this is a tentative budget, so that the numbers that we have up on the screen are the amount of money that we have, um, in cash, but the number for the miscellaneous fund is always able to grow since our bookstore and, um, our cafeteria are still collecting money as we speak. So, our total sources of fund at the moment are four hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, or four hundred forty-eight, four hundred dollars, and for our uses of funds, um, the total uses of funds matches our total sources of funds, and it's divided into a couple of specific categories, which will be explained on the next couple of pages, but first off, we have, um, campus life, which gets thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Secondly, we have co-curricular programs, which get two hundred and one, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Next, we have ASIVC operations, which is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and finally, we have, I mean, next, we have contingency, the mid-year requests, and the scholarships, which is one hundred and fifty, three hundred forty thousand dollars, and finally, student support, which is forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. So once again, so that, once again, the total, uh, uses of our funds matches the total source of our funds. So, on the next page, we will explain, uh, a little bit more in the pie chart.
On page three, we have developed a pie chart that shows the allocation by percentage and total dollar for each program category based upon available funds. This percentage is the proportion of a total source, source of funds that are allocated to that category. Page four covers the breakdown of campus life. Thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars has been posited. These are the programs that students look for as extracurricular activities on our campus, and ASIVC recognizes the need to keep students engaged beyond the classroom. They are also the programs that notice the accomplishments of our students at IVC when they receive awards and graduate. As you can see, there are several examples on the screen, and this is what gives IVC students our campus life. The next page are our co-curricular programs. We have allocated two hundred, one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, dollars this year. We believe that IVC's strong reputation in our competitive programs such as Forensics, Manson, Womans, Intercolleges Sports Activities, and other successful competitive co-curricular programs are our strongest recruiting tools for IVC. Page six is our student government operation. Fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars has been posited. As you can see, it is the day-to-day expenses of ASIVC, which includes all aspects of the student government operations. The bookkeeping cost, duplicating of minutes and attendance, toners for printers, paper, flyers, and posters for events, and some examples on the screen.
So, page seven is, um, the contingency, the mid-year requests, and the scholarships. Now, the top number is the contingency and the emergency reserve, which is forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Sec- the second number that you see on the screen is the allocations and the anticipated mid-year requests. Now, this is the twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars that were left over from the line account items, and finally, the OSHA and, uh, the OSHA and Scholarship Endowment, which is eighty thousand dollars, and, um, the, these are, this is the money that we have for the scholarship, and we found that currently sixty thousand dollars meets the amount of funds that we need for, um, the amount of students that actually apply for scholarships, so if we were ever to need more, we would always change this number. So the final page is, uh, student support, which gets forty-nine thousand, uh, four hun- or eight, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, and these are all of the programs that benefit students that don't, aren't covered under the general fund, and one specific example here is, um, the theater, and when the theater needs more money that the general fund doesn't cover, we're able to fund them as well. So, um, and now, if you have any questions, this, really, thank you.
Any questions from any of my colleagues? Trustee Milchiger.
This is actually a question, is, is, uh, thank you to both student bodies, uh, presidents for presenting a, a balanced and, and good budget. I, I noticed that Irvine Valley College, uh, student government has close to half a, half a million dollars in their budget, and our district's budget is getting close to, um, half a billion dollars, getting, so, uh, you know, you talk million here, millionaire, billionaire, billionaire, soon, you're talking about real money, but this is real responsibility when you're talking about half a million dollars for the student government, so, you, you really have been, it's enormous responsibility, and, and you seem to be handling it well, so I thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, I'd just like to, uh, compliment both this team and the Saddleback team, uh, for very fine presentation, they're succinct and, uh, well-presented. You may want to thank, uh, Don, about inviting these young people to go with you to Sacramento, they seem to do a better job in balancing budget than the current legislature. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, again, I, I want to echo the congratulations to both of these schools for the budget you presented, and it is an action item, so I'll move approval of both budgets, tentative budgets, I should say.
Moved in second and further discussion? All right, I, I share in that condemnation of both, commendation to both. Could be why the state's in trouble. Um, both teams, thank you all, and, uh, let's vote. And Mather carries unanimously, all right? Thank you all. And at this point, we're going to advance item seven point one, which is an information item here with respect to the ongoing chancellor recruitment search, and let me start this one with Vice Chancellor Bouguet.
Mr. President, members of Board of Trustees, we have with us our consultant on the, we have with us the, our consultant from Community College Search Services, John Romo, who will be reporting to the board the current status of our chancellor's search.
Thank you very much, uh, President Wagner and members of the board. Uh, this is just to provide you a brief update on the activities that have been taking place in, in carrying out the search process. Uh, since, um, you made the, the decision and gave final approval for the brochure language to go out to the prospective candidates, uh, we have been very actively involved in three primary areas. Obviously, the most critical area at this stage of the process is our out, uh, is the area, uh, relating to our outreach efforts. We've also, uh, been in doing that, spending a lot of time in following up personally with prospective candidates, and really going out and kind of, um, rustling the bushes to get people who might not have been given consideration to a move, uh, to give consideration to this vacancy. Uh, the third, uh, major focus of our effort to date has been in working with the interview committee in, um, finalizing its process and the, the questions and the formats, uh, that we'll be using in, um, that first round of interviews and paper screening. A little bit of detail on our outreach effort, uh, this has been a partnership between the, uh, Dr. Bouguet and his office and Community College Search Services. Uh, we have placed ads in all of the key, uh, higher education publications, nineteen publications specifically, that was carried out primarily through, uh, the district office, uh, the Human Resources Office in consultation with CSS. Also, uh, Community College Search Services, uh, we have, uh, followed through on what we said we would do, and we have distributed, uh, communication, we've, uh, to our four hundred and fifty-person database about the position, and, uh, we have also followed up with postings on all of the major Community College list serves within the state of California, and most recently, uh, we have added to those postings, uh, the announcement with a personalized letter from Community College Search Services- from Community College Search Services to all of the chief instructional officers, information officers, financial officers, and, uh, student services officers and human resources officers as well to get into that level of awareness, for them to have an awareness at that level of the vacancy. Uh, our other consultants are actively involved in many other searches, but they are also beginning to assist us. As I mentioned when I originally presented our proposal to you, we do have two consultants out of state and they have begun to really try to go out and disseminate information about the vacancy. And as a result of that, I received information today that two candidates are very likely to be applying from the, as a result of those efforts. Jim Walker and I, my partner in working with you on this search, we have, since we announced the position, we have had communication directly, personally, with up, uh, close to thirty prospective candidates and we are continuing that process. It was a little tough in the early part, later, um, part of the spring because current presidents and chancellors were very busy with end-of-year activities. And so now, uh, we are starting to step up the, those personal contacts. I can tell you that we have lots of interest in the position. Of the people that I've contacted, I would say only three, maybe four have said, no, I'm not interested. And all others have said, I'm going to give it serious consideration or definitely I am a candidate. And I know that Dr. Wagner, uh, Dr. Walker has also had a similar kind of response. We, in working with the committee, our focus has been on two things. Uh, and we are really coming to closure on those two very important parts of the process. One is the completion, the finalization of the questions that we will be using through the interview process. Uh, we have a sat, it'll be roughly twelve to fourteen questions that will be asked of each candidate. And those questions are directly taken from the information that was presented in the brochure in which you articulated the district priorities in your search for Chancellor. We have also come to agreement on the, um, the template and the format that we'll use for paper screening to get down to the ten or twelve candidates that will go through that first round of interviews. And we're really, we've come to closure on that as well. I also did want to mention to you that the committee has decided that it will be requiring a writing sample of the people that will be interviewed by the committee. And that will be a part of the, so, the process for the committee as it comes to closure on the recommended candidates that will ultimately go to you. We are on schedule. Uh, we will be, uh, we posted on August eleventh what we call soft deadline in order for our candidates to be able to be considered for the first round interviews. The committee will be meeting on August seventeenth to finalize the questions to be used in the interview and also to identify the ten, twelve, fourteen candidates that will be participating in interviews with the committee. The interviews will take place September second and third. So we are on our target to be able to have a recommendation to you in early September, mid-September. So everything is moving along very well. And I am very confident that we are going to have outstanding candidates to recommend to you so that you can make your decision in identification of your new Chancellor. With that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. And any questions? Trustee Fuentes.
How many recommendations do you anticipate will be sent to the Board?
That could be, uh, there's no set number. Uh, that can be, typically, it's three, four, sometimes five. Uh, a recent search that Jim Walker and I worked on, the Board ultimately wound up talking to five people. Uh, and so, uh, there's no, it's, it's no set number, but I would say at least three and possibly more.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchiger.
I'm, I just feel really good about the process and the fact that you have really a good feeling yourself about the quality of the candidates that we're receiving. And I feel really confident and good about it too. So I'm looking forward to having a good search and picking a good Chancellor for the district.
Thank you very much, yeah. It's, uh, I, I've been pleased with the response.
Anything further? All right. Seeing no further questions, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Let's now go back to the consent calendar and see what we can do with the consent calendar. I am going to poll item five point two. Anyone else have any other items to remove? All right. Seeing no other items to be polled, let's vote on the consent calendar minus item five point two. Matter carries unanimously. And I ask that five point two be polled. I have just a couple of questions about this. It's Irvine Valley College, a special program, I guess, to get our police dispatchers more training than they've got? It says they're already post-certified. How much does this program cost us? Okay. I'll do part of this, I didn't get to the item here, but I'm fairly well familiar with it. You have to be right on the microphone, don't you? The officers are post-certified typically. And what Irvine Valley College has been working on over the last couple of years is to move from what most of you might recognize as a college information officer or a college operator and move that activity over into the police department. And that way, um, the information, it's really the point of contact for emergencies anyway. And they would be able to route other calls at the same time. Now, to this program then, as we begin to hire our dispatchers, which we do have a couple now, if they become post-certified, then we are eligible for funding for any kind of nine-one-one activities. Uh, they will become essentially a nine-one-one center and be able to receive funding for that. And so that will pay for all of the costs for post, although I think the post costs are actually covered also. Uh, so there shouldn't be any cost to the district for that. Are they taking nine-one-one calls just from the campus or from the wider community? Well, they can take them from anyone if they are certified as post. But most of the calls will come in nine-one-one from the campus. Uh, now, which happens, is we do get those, I don't want to tell you often, but when they do come in, they'll actually go to our police department first and then we have to route it out. And so this way, as they're doing that activity, they'll be paid for it because they'll actually be certified to do those activities. Whereas now, they do it anyway and we have absolutely no compensation for it. Trustee Williams.
Having been out of law enforcement for a number of years, I, I would support exactly what President Rockmore referred to. The eligibility for post-funding is, is a big part of this. If you think natural disaster, I'm sure there's coordination between Irvine Police Department and our campus police, and this would enable them, I think, with post-funding to develop programs where they can talk to each other more easily if, if that needed to, to occur. But one of the primary sources, I believe, still for post-funding to the law enforcement agencies is in the court payment of fines. When you pay a fine for most any parking ticket or speeding ticket, there's a penalty assessment. And in the penalty assessment, which almost doubles your traffic violation or a misdemeanor, that's what goes, a portion of that goes to post. So we would be getting post-reimbursement, which is a wonderful thing.
Any idea how many dollars we're talking here?
Pardon?
Any idea how many dollars we're talking here? I mean, does this cost us anything and how much do we expect it to add?
Actually, no, and, and my memory was satisfied here when Randy handed the item here to me, is that the cost will be entirely reimbursed once the certification occurs. So there'll be, there'll be no cost to us ultimately. They gain a new certification for quality and expertise, which I think will pay off for us in the long run.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right. Further discussion, let's vote. And it carries unanimously. All right. Six point one we have done, and, no, no, no. Six point one is our budget. And so let's move to our budget, and I will turn it over to Deputy Chancellor Portner.
This is the time that we discuss the tentative budget. Uh, you're used to this routine by now. Uh, the final budget will be prepared and submitted to the Board in August. It's quite possible this year, the way the, the state is addressing its state budget matters, that there will be very little change between now and then. But who knows what they might do. This fiscal year is about to end. We're about to begin in a new one. As has been the habit of the legislature and the Governor, we're beginning a new year again without a state budget. We're getting used to that. The main issues this year on the Democratic side seems to be the, uh, the drastic cuts in social programs such as basic skills and CalWorks. On the Republican side, it's the traditional Republican issues of increasing taxes in order to balance the budget and their opposition to that method of balancing the budget. Somewhere along the line, uh, the, the state will agree on some resolution. Uh, one tendency of the state right now that you ought to watch as time goes on is that they're starting to change the responsibility for various programs from a state responsibility down to a local responsibility. With that, of course, comes the, the requirement to fund those programs. That's obviously what the state's trying to do, get that cost away from them and on to local government. I think in the long run, uh, what we're going to see is a restructuring of the way that local government, including school districts, are funded. And because you can't keep pushing state obligations down to local governments who are already strapped and, and expect them to do that for very long. I don't know what the change will be, but I, I suggest to you that you, you know, have to watch it. They're going to, they're going to do something. The, uh, with regard to our budget, of course, it's balanced as required by law. We have the seven and a half percent contingency reserve that's, that's been required by the Board. First of all, let me, let me say is, before we get too much more into it, is, is that we all need to recognize how fortunate we are in this district to have the local tax base that we do have. And although times are trying and colleges are required to take on more and more responsibilities without sufficient additional funding to take care of that. Uh, if you compare our life here to what other districts are facing, just, just read about your local unified districts. They're facing having to cut twenty-five million from their budget or thirty million from their, their budget just to survive. Uh, there are community colleges that have not that magnitude of reductions to make, but substantial in relation to, to their budget. Some are implementing furloughs and all kinds of, of, of measures that we haven't had to do. Uh, one of the, the other outcomes statewide is that I, uh, last year, this ending year, there was a reduction in course offerings statewide of six percent. And we've been able, uh, in our situation, to keep our offerings and our instructional offerings pretty much the same. And, uh, in fact, we're starting to get students into our district from surrounding districts that are cutting back. So I, um, I think we have to put this in perspective and realize how fortunate we are. As I always do, and it's more important this time because they're going to be on their own next time, I want to acknowledge the people that really do the work, not me. Beth Muller here is the District Director of Fiscal Services. Devit Kachatrian over here is the Director at Irvine Valley College. Carol Hilton at Saddleback College. And their work with their college presidents and with their local college budget committees is where the real effort takes place, and they're to be commended for their work. They're the ones that will give you the final budget, and I have confidence that that will be a sound budget. Okay, the overview of the tentative budget structure is, was mentioned earlier this evening. Uh, the total of all funds is four hundred and forty-six million dollars. Of that, the general fund is two hundred and twelve million of that amount. The unrestricted, um, budget is a hundred and ninety-eight million, almost a hundred and ninety-nine. The other funds amount to two hundred and thirty-four million. And that includes all the other funds that you'll see, if you got your print out there or the slide. Um, community education, child development, capital outlay. Uh, and basic aid expenditures are also, is, is there a question?
Are you running a PowerPoint because we've got nothing?
We don't have anything.
You don't have anything? It's out here.
It's not on our screen, so we can't see it. We, we have our.
Yeah, there is a, there is one.
Our papers.
Well, I guess I'm assuming.
There it goes, thank you, thank you.
Okay. You didn't miss much, I don't guess. Okay, capital outlay funds was, is one of the other funds. And there's a large amount of money, as you'll see in your report, in capital outlay. And that's where we're doing our facilities projects. And also, there's, there's a pretty tidy sum now in the retiree benefits funds. Of our assumptions in developing the budget is that we're using three sixty-one revenue allocation and that's how we're funding our budget, use our dis, our colleges, rather. Included in the assumption here is a negative call of point three-eight percent. There is a movement to probably get rid of that by the time that the final budget is adopted. And you'll see that at the end. There's growth funding in here of two point two percent. Total increase then to the calculations is two point eight percent, or two point eight million, I'm sorry. The, uh, there are some one-time monies that are going into the model that are recalculations of prior year. Uh, what that means is that when the original budget was done, certain assumptions were made. For instance, maybe enrollment assumptions, when you got to the end of the year, there was more enrollment than originally thought. And so there's some adjustments because of that. And the unrestricted general fund balance moving forward is twenty-four point seven million. There is, I mentioned before, seven and a half percent reserve for economic uncertainties that we have in there an estimated ten percent increase in health and welfare benefits. Those numbers are starting to come in with actuals and it's going to be more like six percent, I, I think. So there'll be some reduction in the cost estimate there. Property liability hasn't come in yet, but we expect that to be maybe lower than we originally thought. But right now, there's no increase in there. There was an increase to pers from nine point seven percent to ten point two percent. Unemployment insurance went up. You can see the general trend, everything's going up. Uh, in salary increases, we have CSCEA in here at a one percent salary increase because that was previously negotiated contract. I think they're in the last year of their contract, and that year had been negotiated at one percent. Administrators, managers, faculty, police officers, there's nothing in the budget for that right now. Uh, there haven't, none of the negotiations has been completed for those groups. Here's a report that we've shown you before that, um, shows what our basic aid receipts have been since we went back into basic aid, which is nineteen ninety-nine. So you can see it growing from five point six million in ninety-nine to thousand to, um, in two thousand eight, nine, up to fifty-one million. And this year, based on what we've recently got from the Treasury about their collections, we think it'll be about thirty-eight point six million. Projected for next year is thirty-six million. Now, remind everyone again that basic aid is not a number definite of something we get. It is a balancing number.
It's the difference between what we collect in local property taxes and our entitlement in SB 361. So as entitlement to funding in 361 increases, for instance, with the 2.2% enrollment growth that's in here, that drives down the amount of basic aid we have, as would any COLA that we might end up with. That would drive the number down too. In addition, our tax collections are down. We're estimating a 3% decrease in tax collections in the upcoming year. Of our basic aid funds and the way they're being used, we have $8 million going to the retiree benefit expenses. We'll be more on that in just a minute. 2.3 million for the operating budget of ATAP. We have an upcoming trustee election, $850,000 that we're proposing we use basic aid money for. And then the remainder, then, of what we will be collecting in basic aid is just about $30 million, and that would be earmarked for one-time projects, mostly the capital projects. Okay, back to the retiree benefits trust fund. Part of the requirements of GASP 43 and 45 is that we have to have an actuarial study update every two years, and we've just completed that. And the result of the actuaries' estimate of our crude liability is 61 million. That leaves an unfunded amount of 4.9 million. Now, that's caused by two factors. One, a larger-than-estimated cost of health benefits than what was assumed by the actuary in the last study. And in addition, what happened is, you're quite aware, because we've talked about it a number of times, but the amount of our investment into the fund, which was 53 million, I think, 51 or 52, we lost. When the market really decreased, then the value of that investment went down. Fortunately for us, it's since then come back to about the level that originally was. But what happened to us is during that time, we didn't earn the revenue that the actuary had estimated that we would earn and would be added to the amount that was in the fund. So we have a contribution to make because of that. The total basic aid contribution, in any event, totally that we suggest we put to OPEB this year is $8 million. Goodness, that's it. So those are the highlights of what's in here. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Looks like a really well-balanced budget with a seven and a half percent reserve, so that's good. Really, really tough fiscal times. I have a question about which you didn't show on the PowerPoint presentation. On the spreadsheet we have, it says the beginning fund balance is about $208 million. And then it said, this is the first page of the tentative budget, the materials we received. So it says that beginning fund balance is $207,985,661. And then it says, ending fund balance, it's $77,756,400. So why is there such a big drop from the beginning fund balance to the ending fund balance for the tentative budget for the district? Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the assumptions that is not going to happen, but you have to make an assumption one way or another, and that's that the money that comes in for the capital outlay projects is all going to be spent in this year. And I've had discussion with Trustee Lang about this very thing. And the fact of the matter is, it won't be, but it has to be shown in some way. Quite a bit of it will be, and in fact, maybe that's one of the reports we ought to be giving to the board, is a better estimate over time of what we're going to be spending for those capital projects. That's...
Okay, thank you. So what you're saying is, these beginning balance funds include the monies for the capital outlay. That's pretty much restricted funds, because it's for capital outlay.
Well, the 200...
Outlay, I'm sorry. And then, we haven't spent them yet, but we plan to spend them this year. Do I understand you correctly?
The 207 million beginning balance that you referred to, that's all funds. So that includes like 52 and a half million that's in the retiree benefits fund. It includes 129 million that's in the capital outlay fund. The amount of the ending balance in the general fund is 25,365. Does that help at all?
Yeah, so you're not worried that our ending balance is so much less than our beginning balance, then?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm not either, but I just wanted to make sure you're not worried.
I'm not worried about our budget at all.
Gary, would you speak to our reserve, our seven and a half percent reserve, a little bit, just for clarification and illumination? Have we, in recent years, tapped those reserves? And how do you treat those dollars from one year to the next?
At the end of the, first of all, at the end of the year, it just goes into the ending balance, and then it's, the amount of the reserve is established again in the new I did it right. Okay. And you want to know, how is it established?
No, I guess my question is, have we ever tapped it?
No.
And when would we see, or how would it be reported to us that it has been tapped?
Oh, it would be reported to you, but we would have to come back to you and ask for a transfer of funds into some expenditure account in order to spend that money.
So how many years back would you say we have not tapped it?
We haven't tapped into it since I've been here. In past years prior to that, they tapped into it and more.
Thank you.
Yes, my comment, a little different line. You and I also had a little conversation about this before, but it really has to do with the allocations at the college level of the college budget. And it also ties in, I think, a little bit later with the discussion that we may have about the accreditation reports that are coming for us today. And I guess one of the things that concerns me a bit is that when I look at the college budgets, I see a, I think, an inordinately small amount of that budget that's going into capital outlay, either for new capital projects or repairs and maintenance of existing buildings. Certainly, that number's a higher number, and I would expect it to be a higher number at Saddleback College. It's a very tiny number at Irvine Valley College. Obviously, newer campus may be not as much need, but where it ties in, I think, is where the colleges then develop these schedules that speak to what their needs are from a capital improvement standpoint. And of course, those needs are going to be greater to the extent that the colleges are not performing or not devoting more of their budgets to deferred maintenance projects, capital improvement projects, and so forth. So, you know, I think where I get concerned about that additionally is where I see commentary, for example, in the accreditation self-study report that talks about a fair allocation of basic aid dollars, a school perhaps lobbying that they're not getting their fair share of those dollars, and then to see how much of their budget they're actually willing to put forward to spend in that area, I think is disingenuous to some extent. So I'll leave my comments at that for now.
Okay. Are you looking for a response?
Not necessarily. Very short timer, go for it.
Well, it appears there are probably going to be no more questions, but Gary, I wanted to thank you for your years of service in the budget area. You've been a godsend to this district, because I recall in the mid-'90s, after the bankruptcy, we were on the financial watch list and the struggles we have. Marcia's been here with me that whole time. It was a scary time. It really was. And we can be really thankful where we are now as a district. I mean, we read the newspapers every week now about the K-12s and the layoffs of teachers and other support staffs. So we're very fortunate, and I just wanted to commend you and all of the staff that you cited participating. Thank you all very much, and it's my pleasure to move approval of the item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And further comment, Trustee Cadmore.
Yes, I just want to pick up with what Trustee Williams said. I came on the board when we were on the financial watch list. This prior board had tapped into reserves, and we were using basic aid monies for ongoing expenses. And since I've been on the board, the board has absolutely refused to use basic aid for ongoing expenses, which has tremendously helped us, and we haven't had to tap into reserves, and we've in fact upped our reserves. So I think it's wonderful that we have such a healthy budget in these times, and I thank Gary for all of your service and leading us down the right path.
Seeing no further comments, let's vote on approval of the tentative budget. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you. 6.2 we have done, 6.3 here for approval. This is the district mission and vision statements. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.4 here for approval, the contract with Nudisic LLC for software development. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.5, several policy revisions. They are here for discussion or approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? Moved and seconded for approval. Seeing no discussion, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6, a couple of policies. These are just here for review and study. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Vote on the items for review and study only. Matter carry, no, I have not... And it carried unanimously. All right. Item 6.7 is a public hearing. We will recess the hearing of the Board of Trustees and open a public hearing to discuss the SOCCCD Police Officers Association initial proposal. Madam Secretary, are there requests to speak? Hearing none, we will recess the public hearing and go back to the meeting of the Board of Item 6.8, we will go through the same drill. This is a public hearing with respect to the district's initial proposal to the Faculty Association. We will convene a public hearing. Madam Secretary, any requests to speak? Since there are none, we will close the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. We are, excuse me, at item 6.9. It's here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval happily.
Moved and seconded. This is a grant to fund the nursing facility. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Oh, Trustee Elchekar.
This funds an additional nursing faculty member for a full year. It's a grant that we received. So I just really think it's so important in these times to provide healthcare personnel to the people that need it, and I'm very grateful that we have received, that the people that wrote the grant and have received the grant.
Thank you. We need a vote on this item. Matter carries unanimously. 610 academic personnel action items. There are no changes. It is here for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on it. Matter carries unanimously. 611 classified personnel action items, also here for approval. There are no amendments or changes. I'll entertain a motion. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All right, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 7.1 we have done. 7.2, the Saddleback and IVC accreditation reports. You all have them? Questions? Discussions? This is an information item. I don't believe there's a presentation scheduled on these, correct? No. Nope? So ask your questions now. Trustee Lang.
Yes. I guess what I wanted to do was just point out to the board that I would encourage you to take a close look at the, obviously, both accreditation reports, particularly since I was involved with the Saddleback one. There are a few areas that I would direct your attention, particularly having to do with standard four leadership and governance. And there's a few pages I know that I've earmarked in that regard, and I'll just mention what they are. 327, 331, really that whole section in there that goes till right around 360. And much of that has to do with some discussion and suggestions regarding the budget situation that has to do with devotion of resources towards ATAP and so forth. Again, I'm just pointing it out because I think it's something that we ought to look at. It may be areas, in fact, that board leadership wants to consider agendizing for some further discussion and, you know, possibly additional comments that we need to make. So I'm just going to throw that out there and encourage you to take a look at that.
Thank you very much. Further discussions? All right. Item 7.3, an information item. Item 7.4, the basic aid report. Stop me if you want to talk about it, any of this. 7.5, the facilities plan status report. 7.6, the list of board requested reports. And finally, 7.7, the monthly financial status report. All right. Seeing no further items, we are at the report section of the evening's festivities, and we'll start with President Rockmore.
Thank you very much. I would first of all like to welcome Dixie aboard. Thank you for appointing her last meeting. We were vice presidents together and also presidents together, and I must say, I've learned a tremendous amount from her. Also, selecting Don Boucher tonight, I want to thank you for that as well. We were vice presidents together, and in fact, he showed me the ropes in 1997 when I first became vice president. In addition, I'd like to congratulate the trustees on all of your political endeavors and successes. And then finally, to Gary, I jotted down a couple of words that remind me of Gary here, and that is calm, logical, educated, experienced, and a solid friend. And all I can say to Gary is, please keep your cell phone charged. Thank you very much.
President Wagner, thank you. Just a few comments about ATAP. CAC Director Bruce Sobczak and I recently visited the Champs' office to discuss the startup of our grant for the Environmental Design and Compliance Center. But we also had an opportunity to update the dean of Economic Development, Workforce Development there at the Champs' office, Ray York, a little bit about ATAP and give him an overview. And he and some of the staff we talked to were really quite excited about our endeavor and our progress with ATAP. Also, coming into my office is a first draft report, which should be released later in July from Orange County Business Council. It's a data report that we've had them do to help ATAP and the colleges review programs for the potential future, either growth of existing programs or new programs that might possibly land at ATAP in the future. So that will certainly be nice. Also, we do have a couple of large companies in discussion. I won't mention the names tonight because they are in...
I won't mention the names tonight because they are in discussion that have a significant interest in becoming partners at ATAP, not for building facilities, but certainly for providing and donating equipment, significant resources to help our instructional programs. More about that in the future. Thank you.
Professor Rochford.
Good evening. I am not Lisa Davis Allen. She is in Texas, so I'm sitting in tonight. And on behalf of the Senate, we'd like to welcome all of our brand-new colleagues to the district who you approved this evening.
And now for somebody who is not Professor Dominguez.
I'm Norm West, and I'm the vice president of Saddleback Academic Senate, and we're just working through the summer and really not much to report, so...
And somebody who is neither Louis Long nor Lee Hagerty.
A lot of changes. It's too early to go home. This is an 8:00 meeting, you know? So I have about a 15-minute speech, and then... Actually, let me start out by echoing the accolades of the board towards the people that have just gone through an election and congratulate Don and John. And I'd also like to congratulate David. David, you did a wonderful campaign. I think you would have made an excellent treasurer, and I think that all three of you have served the district with integrity and have served the community well, and so I congratulate all of you. And also, for you, Tom, for the Republican Committee, I'd also like to express our sadness and condolences, Don, for your loss of your son. Of course, you know, we've talked. Let me see, where are we? I would like to acknowledge the faculty at both Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College for the outstanding job that they did this year in increasing significantly the productivity of the faculty and the enrollment statistics. The productivity has gone up significantly this year, and I think it's a tribute to our colleagues, to our faculty, to the administration, to the scheduling, and so on and so forth. I'd also like to speak just briefly about the accreditation process. I was fortunate enough to attend the accreditation meeting that went on the other day at Irvine Valley, representing Gwyn Planto, and the collegiality that went on and the tremendously hard work that has been put into it by the committee, by Wendy specifically, by Don, by others on the committee. I think they've all done a wonderful job in representing the college, its issues, its successes, its challenges, and its future. Finally, I would like to say a personal word, if I may, to Gary. Gary, I'll miss you a lot. We've been great friends, and that doesn't mean our friendship is going to stop, but and I won't particularly miss you at the board meetings either, but I just want to say, what a wonderful job you've done. And what a wonderful steward you've been to the district, to the budget, and the person that always brought balance when balance was needed, so I appreciate all the effort that you've made. Thank you. That's it, folks. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, President Wagner. Classified Senate of Saddleback College would like to extend their condolences to you and your family for your loss. Currently, the Classified Senate will be having an executive retreat this next month to decide on the goals and the professional aspects that we're going to be working for the classified employees for the college. Also, coming up in July, I will be attending my first Board of Directors meeting for the Community College League of California as the new president-elect for the California Community College Classified Senate.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore?